So, let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for giving us the opportunity to come together again. Please bless us with insights and wisdom and perseverance as we discuss the issues that are important to our city. May we do right through your will. Bless those who serve and protect us in Christ's name. Amen.
Ms. Lorna, would you read a simple question?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are the public, we are the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, endless for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
All right. As I say in every meeting, rules of decorum under effect. Basically, it means treat people with respect and be a... All right. Any citizens' comments, shall we? All right. There are no citizens' comments. We'll move straight on. First thing is going to be continuation of the public hearing to consider the application of Steve Smith requesting a change in zoning from SF 2.5, single-family, two po— um, single-family, 2.5 to PD Plan Development District for the development of a 10-single-family residential subdivision with minimum 1 and 1/2 acre lots on 27 acres of land currently zoned 2.5, which requires a minimum lot size of 2 and 1/2 acres of land. The property is located—the property location is adjacent to the intersection of 550 and FM 1139 on the southeast side of the intersection. Property is described as county parcel ID numbers 10783, 45857, and 10782. Zoning of this subject property will amend the official zoning map of the city of McQuin and Chisholm. Whew! That was a mouthful. All right. Public hearing is open on that. You can, if you need to brief us on this, Mike, yes.
Mike Coker, representing the city. This is a continuation of a public hearing that we actually started over a month ago for the consideration of a new plan development district for a 10-lot subdivision. A little history, it's at the intersection of FM 1139 and across 550 from that intersection. 27 acres, three parcels. There's currently a house under construction on the larger of the parcels. This is going to be a family compound generally that will have 10 single-family lots. And I want to give you a little quick history about where—how we got where we are. They originally applied for a 9-lot subdivision with 2 and 1/2 acre lots because they didn't want to change the zoning. But when they submitted it for review, the plat failed to comply with the mandatory required front yard adjacent to a public way. And then they also had a—was a fire apparatus access road that was longer than the fire code allows for by 100 feet of stuff. And so, I recommended an aisle. It got—it got an aisle. They appealed—they went to the Board of Adjustment and asked for variance, and the board said, "Well, the code says this. You didn't do this." And so, no. So, they asked me, "What's the solution?" I said, "Well..." And they asked me, actually, "Why Sonoma Verde got this kind of stuff?" And I said, "Well, because Sonoma Verde is a planned development district. You customize your zoning to fit the requirements, then you can have cul-de-sacs that are a little bit larger, smaller, different. You can have things that—pie-shaped lots that don't require 300 feet of frontage along the public way." That kind of stuff. And so, they actually came back and filed a new—new planning document, which is a planned development district, which is in front of you now. This is a continuation of the public hearing. And when you pull this up, I'd be glad to give you more information unless you have questions right now.
Okay. Any questions, Mike? Yes, sir. Nope. Hold on. There we go. I got to see the little red light come on so I know it's on.
You know, I—uh, my name's Andrew Tom. I'm an attorney on behalf of the Watsons. I reside at 346 Ridge Point Drive, and my address is 40, but I say that in a 300-foot distance. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Watsons. The Watsons are not developers. They're—they are trying to develop a neighborhood that they're trying—it's a 27-acre tract. They initially tried, like Mr. Coker said, we initially—they banged their head against the wall initially trying to make the 2 and 1/2 acre zone. And the two issues that came up were the cul-de-sacs. You can't have—without a p—uh, planned development district, you cannot have a cul-de-sac because you'll never meet the 300-foot, uh, frontage requirement. And in addition, as Mr. Coker said, there's—when you look at their roads, they're slightly larger than 600 feet of cul-de-sac. We have since, uh, that appeal, gone back, met with Mr. Coker, submitted a new document with P&amp;Z, had some opposition by the public, stayed afterwards, met with them, alleviated all the neighbors concerned, came back to P&amp;Z, went through, uh, the Board of Adjustments. Okay. Good point. Came back, and then it was approved by them. We're basically asking for a 10-lot subdivision, all but four of the lots are larger than 2 and 1/2 acres. The concept plan is a very wooded, uh, plat with an exterior, uh, tree barrier around the entire town. I do have larger plans that are coming in the way in your package, but we had a miscommunication and the builders off the news. So, don't have much just yet. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but we're merely trying to get on to the next stage.
Right. Right. Mike, on—on this, has—the did they go—I know, were we at the public hearing? Was that—or I mean, the P&amp;Z, was that the one that was over at the fire station?
Fire station.
Okay, that's the one you're talking about, right?
Right.
Last week. How was—what was last week on P&amp;Z?
Last week, the P&amp;Z recommended approval, subject to amending page 2 of the plat to replace where it had references to the city of Rockwall—
Uh-huh.
—with the city of McQuin and Chisholm, which they have done. In addition to that, they also amended all the civil plans that should the council approve this case tonight, we'll be going to our city engineer tomorrow.
Okay. Do I have to come up with anything that P&amp;Z had said on that? And don't feel bad about saying you live in—you actually live in Keith, but you get a horny address or—we've got a lot of McQuin and Chisholm residents because of our zip code that pops up Rockwall. Some people just say I'm in—I live in Rockwall. Right. Gotcha. All right. Do we have anybody else on the public hearing? I got nothing. People could argue with you about that one with me. Yeah. See, I couldn't make the funny about myself. If there is nobody else for anything on the public hearing, then I will close the public hearing for it. It is 6:39. Public hearing closed. Did I tell you the time opened up? Okay. All right. Sir, thank you for speaking on behalf. Six—uh, items 6-1, 6-2, and 6-3 is the consent agenda, the budget report, building official report, and the animal control report. If there are no questions on any of that, I'll entertain a motion to approve all three of those consent agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to extract item 6.2, please, with a question.
Okay. We'll remove 6.2.
I'd like to pull item 6.2 from the consent agenda.
Okay. I've got a motion to pull 6.2. Do I have a second? Okay. There's no discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right. Show that one pulled. Now, can we do the consent agenda on 6-1 and 6-3? Are we—I'll entertain a motion to approve those two as is. Okay. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Let me check that. Um, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh.
All right. I've got a second, bye. Bye, Trudy. If there's no discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Show those—show those two off the—off the board and approve. All right. We'll open up 6.2. That's the building official report. Ms. Lorna, you had a question?
Yes, I did. On—on the building official report, we have, I believe, to be a duplicate of—of address 1533 Vista is listed twice. So, I want to make sure that, uh, we extract that since we total those monies up. We need to make sure we don't have that duplicated. And then I just wanted to amplify to the public that we had 102 building permits this year for single-family residencies—residences, and last year this time, we only had 36. So, we are experiencing quite a building boom—
Yes.
—which will be, uh, explain to us, uh, the implica—implications of that when we hear from Mr. Smith, uh, later today.
Okay.
So, that's the only thing. It wasn't that I—I just wanted to make sure that those—that one address was corrected.
Absolutely. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve 6.2 with those adjustments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the building official report from May 2022 with the, um, extraction of the one duplicate address of 1533 Vista.
All right. I've got a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Show 6.2 finished. Before we move on to item 7 or 7.1, were those the things you were talking about? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and—and let the attorney bring those up for you guys for—about what the public hearing was about. That way, you can look at them at your leisure. I said it's the button under the blue frame. Yes, sir. That's fine. Okay. Uh? Yes. You're the star of the show, sir. Of course, I date myself, as I said, uh, you know? You might get a call from Star Search in the near future. That's fine. Yeah, we can—we—they can take that in the back room and look at it. Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, the next item that's up is going to involve this, so if you all want to look at that. Okay. That's fine. You have—you have one of page 40, you said, of your packet.
Mr. Mayor, have you called this item, uh—
Sir?
7.1? Have you called it?
I haven't—we're fixing to. We're, um—I'll consider a motion on 7.1, consider approval of an application requested from Stephen Smith, request of approval of the planned development district for the development of 10 single-family residential lot—lots subdivision with minimum 1 and 1/2 acres lots on approximately 27 acres of land currently zoned SF 2.5, which requires a minimum lot size of 2 and 1/2 acres of land.
Currently zoned 2.5, which requires a minimum lot size of 2 and 1/2 acres of land. And this is based on the, uh, the pre—the conceptual plan, also the preliminary plat that is dated the 17th of June 2022.
Okay. I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Okay.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. Now, it's open for discussion. Michael, did you have questions or something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to say that this application conforms to the conference of plan as it was adopted by the—by the council because the—the conference of plan for this part of town says that it should be a planned community, and this is a planned community. And it should have minimum lot—lot sizes of 1 acre, usually 1 and 1/2 plus. So, it conforms to the conference of plan. And the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission have recommended.
The planning and zoning, uh, recommendations are, um, were fixed, and if you look at the front page or the—the cover page of that conceptual plan, under the notes, there are several action items, uh, that the, uh, developer said he will comply with. And have.
Any questions, sir? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous?
All right. Move on to 7.2. Consider approval of the application of Stephen Smith requesting approval of preliminary plat for the development of 10 single-family residential lot subdivision with minimum 1 and 1/2 acre lots on approximately 27 acres of land.
I'll consider a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I make an, uh—I'd like a—I'd like to make a motion to approve the application of Stephen Smith requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the development of 10 single-family residential lot subdivision with the minimum 1 and 1/2 acre lots on approximately 27 acres of land, with that plat being dated the, uh, 17th of June 2022.
Okay. I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Yeah, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Moving on to 7.3. Consideration—excuse me. Consider approval of the application of RCH Water Supply Corporation for the development slash site slash landscape plans for a 1-acre tract of land located in the Sonoma Verde Plan Development District for compliance with the requirements for approval of the plan subject to conditions set forth by the city planner. All right. I'll consider a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the application of RCH Water Supply Corporation for the development, site, landscape plans for a 1-acre tract of land located in the Sonoma Verde Plan Development District for compliance with the requirements for approval of the plans, subject to the conditions set forth by the city planner.
Yeah, I've got a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. It's now open for discussion. There's not—yes, sir, Mike?
Want to add one thing. The RCH applied also for a final plat, but as a result of the fact that this is part of Sonoma Verde, you have to have an approved landscape plan and an approved site plan prior to accepting the final plat application. So, they're still working with, uh, the freight to get the engineering stuff put together, but you'll probably see the final plat coming through in the next month.
Okay. Thank you, sir. If there's not any questions? Do you have any questions? We're on discussions. Well, this is—this—Mike explained this to me. This is the—the landscaping plans for the 1 acres? Or—explain to me what this application is.
This is—this is two things that are required by the Sonoma Verde Plan Development: detailed development plan, read site plan, and a landscape plan. And interestingly enough, the land—the requirements of the landscaping and screening in Sonoma Verde—Sonoma Verde caused them to have to do a whole bunch of—of positive things to interface with the community because it requires a certain kind of screening, a certain kind of landscape, irrigation. I required them to have a double-check valve on their irrigation system, things that would normally show up in plumbing. But I asked for the—all of that at the front end, and that's what you're considering today. So, it can precede the final plat. But when they do bring the final plat forward, it has to—when I hold it up to the light, it has to look the same.
Okay. Thank—thank you very much. Does that make sense to me? Okay. If there's no other discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Show that unanimous. Move on to 7.4. Consider the application of Charlotte and Robert Winsett requesting approval of a final plat containing 10 acres of land for the creation of 2 residential lots within the ETJ or extraterritorial jurisdiction of McQuin and Chisholm, Rockwall County, Texas. Um, before I ask for the motion, Mike, has this gone before P&amp;Z and all that, too?
Yes, sir. This has been considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommended for approval, subject to compliance with the recommendations that I made to them at the beginning, which was to amend the signature blocks so it was correct and looked like what we have in our code.
Uh-huh.
And remove the language that says preliminary, not for final—final, uh, recording with the county. And let me talk to you about that for a second.
Yes, sir.
We have a provision in our code that is for a—minor plat like this, that the applicant can request consolidation of a preliminary and final plat into one hearing at Planning and Zoning and one hearing at City Council. And we did that because it saves them time. It actually saves them money. And—and the answer is usually the same, if they complied with all the rules, because as we recall, plating is ministerial, it's not legislative.
All right. I will consider a motion to approve the application. I want to have to read one all over again. I'll consider a motion on that one, on 7.4.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a—make a motion to approve the application of Charlotte and Robert Winsett requesting approval of a final plat containing 10 acres of land for the creation of 2 residential lots within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of McQuin and Chisholm, Rockwall County, Texas.
All right. I've got a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
It wasn't on—it says—we don't have it here. It's really—I find it hard—
Do we have it in our package?
I don't have it in my package. That's why I'm like—I'm—I don't feel comfortable voting on something I don't have written from P&amp;Z.
I don't—I don't have mine up. I didn't print that out.
I mean, if—if somebody could come up with it, that'd be great, but—
Shoot to page 59 in your package if somebody's got their computer open.
I do have mine open, but I don't— And this is—so, it's in here. So, where is it on my—I got—I have two.
I've got it on page 61 and 120.
Okay. But is this what is—I what I'm asking is—
This is it.
This is what P&amp;Z is telling us recommendation?
And it's—I've got it here on here where it says the condition where you said amend the signature blocks, move the language preliminary. I see all of that.
Okay. Perfect. 22. Okay.
So, yes, it is—it is in here.
Got it. Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. See if I get them doing in the fabric. One more second. Ah, I'm—yeah. Yes. All right. Move on to 7.5. Appointment with Ray Smith, CPA, to discuss 2021 amendments in preparation of 2022 annual operating budget. Sir, you are the star of the show.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pleasure to be here. Good to see all of you. What we have for you is an extremely—and I will say that again, extremely preliminary, uh, set of, uh, two documents. One is the proposed amendment to the current 2022 budget and—and a, um, even more preliminary proposed 2023 budget. The reason that we're proposing a—an amendment to the 2022 budget is obviously because, uh, the rollback election. So, anytime you have something, um, of that nature, then that's going to necessitate an amendment to the current budget. So, since we have to do that amendment because of that reason, what we did is we ran a projection of the year-end based upon the first—the activity through June, which is nine months. And we arbitrarily chose to make an amendment of any line item that was plus or minus 20% from the current budget as compared to the projection. That is purely an arbitrary number. These are—for—this is for your consideration. Nothing is—is set in stone. It is just a way to get started. There will have to be an amendment. It doesn't have to be done math, but we will want to get it done by year-end so that we have an amended budget that matches up well with the actuals when the audit comes in. We don't want our—our budget to be so far away from the actuals without an amendment. So, that's why we're doing the—called the audit. And, um, but—but it's—it's, uh, you know, good news and—and bad news from the standpoint that we did have a decline in property tax revenue because of the rollback of approximately And I believe that that—that payment was prepared, um, today, uh, for reimbursement. So, in looking at that, question's going to be, "Well, how did that—how did that impact... So in looking at that, question's going to be, well, how did that, how did that impact the, the numbers that we originally budgeted for what we're saying we're going to end up as compared to the proposal? And, um, fortunately, building permit income and sales tax revenue, the increases on those, on those two items more than offset the decline in the property tax revenue. So the, um, and, and, you know, the building permit revenues simply driven by activity and, uh, the activity was rebounded more quickly than we thought at the time of the original budget due to concerns about the slowdown based upon COVID and supply thing and all that. But, but the building, building activity rebounded strongly and therefore the, the permit revenue rebounded as well. What's driving the sales tax revenue increase is partly because of the same reason, and that is we have the chapter three eighty agreement with Bloomfield Highland and Altera. Isn't that where Altera stood, right? That's what I call them. That, that three eighty agreement is, is driving that increase. So that in, the, the increase from the three eighty, basically the city is getting fifty percent of those dollars because the, the three eighty agreement gives a rebate back to the developer for the other half. But at the end of the day, the permit revenue and sales tax revenue made up for the decline in the, um, adblock. So those are the main drivers. The rest of it is simply taking a projection, looking at it as plus or minus, and just adjusting the proposed amended budget to equal the projection. I would say that we would get another two months of actual, uh, behind us and then come in toward the, the last month of the year and come up with the actual amendment to the twenty twenty-two budget. That's, again, we can do anything that you want, but that's just my recommendation that we do that. So having, having that amendment down, we use that as the, the placeholder, if you will, for the proposal for the twenty twenty-three. Basically, we said we're going to take what our amended budget is for twenty twenty-three, and that will be a, the twenty twenty-three proposed budget. And again, that is simply, that is before any, any input. That is just a place to start so that you have an, have a gauge to know what works. Uh, what I did do is I, I took the, took the conservative route and I projected, and again, this is just me and it's in the memo, I, uh, I, uh, reduced sales tax revenue by ten percent. I reduced, uh, building permit revenue by ten percent, just as a matter of the conservative. And, um, then I did a, a very, very, uh, early rudimentary calculation of the, the property tax revenue based upon the, the appraisal numbers that we got. I have to say, it's really way too early to even try to do that because there are so many of the numbers that go into the calculation that we don't know, that we won't know for, you know, another month or two. But the thing that I want to bring to your attention is that the, um, the property tax rate is affected by a sales tax adjustment, as you probably know. And that because that sales tax revenue is so large now, the, the impact of that is about a, a reduction of about three point four cents. So the preliminary calculation of the voter approval rate comes in right at about eleven cents versus thirteen point three where we are today. And then there's that reduction of the self, for the sales tax of three point four. So I'm guessing that the voter approval rate's going to end up somewhere in the neighborhood of eight cents. Again, so many, so much of this can move. I don't want it to be draconian in what I'm saying. It's just that based on what we know today, that's where, Lamb, could it move? No. I don't think it can move down any. It could certainly move up, but, but just to give you a framework of what that number's going to look. But, but even with, you know, saying that, if you look at the, at the, uh, proposed budget for the, the general fund, even with that decline of ten percent in building permit revenue, the decline in, um, um, sales tax revenue and the drop in the, um, um, adblock revenue, um, there's still going to be a potential surplus of about five hundred thousand. So there could be a lot of bad news that, that comes along, and we still would have a balanced budget. So again, this is just to give you a framework for future workshops and future considerations about, about where we are. And I'll have you be happy to hang any questions on that.
Any questions for him? This is preliminary information that really wanted to get us.
Trudy had a really good point the other day. We were talking hypothetically about the fact that, you know, the adblock, the tax rate is now so low because our home appraisals were so high for twenty twenty-one because they're based on twenty twenty-one appraisals, basically, January of twenty twenty-three. But we now have inflation. So how do we articulate the fact that that specific fact? So what gas cost last year isn't what it costs this year, but our houses are worth more. I'm just talking myself into circles and I want to figure out how to articulate that because we're, I'm going to a tax workshop tomorrow and I want to see what other, if other cities are facing the same kind of thing.
I'm sure, I'm sure there are, and, um, I would, I would be as equally interested to hear what, what other, what other folks are thinking about how, because obviously McFlenden Chism isn't by itself in there. You know, the, these, uh, with this calculation of the no new revenue rate and you have these massive increases in appraisals. At the same time, it takes nothing into consideration the massive increase in the underlying cost behind that. But that is the environment that we live in. That and if you look at some of these other cities, they have a lot more commercial.
Yeah.
They have, they have some because they have businesses that are bringing in.
And plus, as, as Ray said, we've, we've done it to ourselves a little bit because we have that, uh, tax, you know, half that sales tax goes towards our, um.
That's really beginning to have a, have a, a large impact. And again, nothing, nothing wrong with that, you know? That was, the supplement was made and, and so it's, the, the revenue's coming in, it's just coming in from a different place than, than adblock.
And we got lucky because we had such, so many building permits that was much more than we had forecasted, which is why we had suggested an increased tax rate in the first place from last year. But cannot sustain is, is the question.
Depends on which forecast you listen to. So whether the market's slowing down, whether it's going to stop, whether the public's going to burst, depending on, to be honest, to be. So there's always the potential. Nobody else, nobody else the right crystal ball, then I'm pretty sure.
I had a question on, on the, uh, you were talking about the decrease in, uh, the monies due to property tax revenue, uh, the rollback was two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And you said that, uh, it was a compensation due to sales tax revenue and then three eighties, which, um, seemed to make up that deficit. Do you have an actual number for the, the two, the summation of the sales tax revenue and the three eighties? Do you have a figure for that? You gave us a figure of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars due to the rollback. Do I have a comparative figure?
How did we come up with that increase? Is that your question, sir? The three eighty-three increase?
Not how you came up with it. I just want to know what the total amount of the sales tax revenue was plus the three eighty amount that increased. The summation of those two will give me a, a figure that I can compare to the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar effective decrease due to the rollback. And it's probably in your figures here, but I can't, I don't, I can't decipher it at this point.
Yeah. Uh, I, I don't have the, the detail of how much of that increase was from the three eighty agreement versus the, the regular. What we did is just took a, we took a trend of what we knew, which was basically from the last invoices we got from Bloomfield, Altera and, and Highland, and just made the assumption that that activity was going to continue through the end of the year.
So there was some extrapolation from basic figures?
We had to extrapolate it because the, the sales tax numbers run two months behind. So in other words, what we're looking at in June is April.
Okay.
So all we can do is just extrapolate.
Okay. So it's a forecasting is what you got? You're seeing some compensation there? Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. I don't think everybody's got any more questions. We appreciate your time and your.
Yes, sir.
I could, before Ray leaves, I want to thank him in this form, uh, for all the help that he's, uh, been to me during this time to walk in and.
Absolutely.
And, uh, find we've got such a fine accountant doing the city's work was, uh, was good. And so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much, Ray. All right. I noticed that we're on to our next thing, but before we go on to seven point six, one of the two individuals, looks like she probably had to take a body break, so I'm going to call a recess for about five minutes. Time's seven eleven. We'll take a five minute recess. You know, I was wondering what the other white light was. We are on seven point six. Appointment with the Pullen family to discuss current food trailer operation followed by possible council action. Whichever one of you would like to come up and talk? Just push the button so the little red lighty thing comes on. There you go. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Holly Pullen. Um, I own Honey Shaved Eyes. It's been brought to our attention that we are in the city limits of McFlenden Chism, which is not allowed. Um, started this business, this is my fourth season, uh, with the intent of being in the county. And according to our, um, trying to recollect the timeframe of building it, there were some T-posts set in the past year that was under my understanding that if I followed that line straight down and my cash box was behind it, that I was in the clear. And through the councils, um, this patient this year, we've discovered that the county line actually cuts back about twenty-five feet at that T-post and comes behind me. So I'm in the city by about twenty-five feet. So I'm here tonight to ask for grace and forgiveness, um, to look at, um, finishing this season as is. I know that y'all voted a few weeks ago to allow food trucks in the city. Um, I'm willing to comply with that, whatever that may be. I'm willing to help establish that too, if, if, you know, our experience is, is, um, valid to y'all. But, um, if we can't come to an agreement, I'm happy to move it. Um, I would ask that if it was possible, if I could move it at the close of my season, just don't interrupt right now. But I'm here just to hear that out and just, um, see how we can go forward with this. Um, one thing that I do pay sales tax, of course, I own my sales. Um, my sales tax has been solely going to Rockwall County. So my next sales tax report is due on July twentieth, and I am, I will pay y'all's portion of that. Um, I have not looked into backdating the sales tax from the last, um, three seasons. If that's something that I need to look into, I'm happy to do that too, to be in compliance with y'all. Um, I had talked to Mr. Polly last week about the jurisdiction. It's not going to be a, it's not going to be a problem on my end to pay that. All I have to do is just add it as a jurisdiction and it's, it's a, not that I'm looking for the easy way. the easy way, but it's, it's very simple that y'all get your money from here going forward on sales tax.
Any questions? I'm sure you're in our lady talking about this. Lorna, yeah, Lorna.
No, I don't have any questions, but it seems that they're operating in good faith, and I would really like to think that even though we don't have food trucks in the city, that they should be allowed to continue, especially since we're only, you know, a month away or so from getting our ordinance.
Right. I don't know about the rest of the council, but, you know, in, in talking with, with our current city administrator and about these types of issues, there is an ability to go back so far to regain anything that was lost as far as, you know, tax revenue, whatever the, the correct wording is. I'm a mindset of it was, it was done by accident. There was no malicious intent to operate a business outside the scope of what the, the rules, the ordinances, all that were in place. I'm fine with the county's approval that we move forward from this point forward as long as everything's done correctly on that side of it. I don't have any issue. Malicious.
They didn't do anything malicious. They, you know, they, they went through the process, did what they were told to do, told, you know, told us this is what we want to do, and everybody understood. And I just feel that that was good faith, and to do the same at this point was my opinion.
Would I recommend it for us? Even if that, if we did the survey and they didn't come back? Obviously, you know, I didn't see them doing it for trying to be a system at all. They're not really there looking at going forward. Making everything right, and that's, that's the guy's fault. Same on our state, except when we're involved, that isn't bad. It's going to put it in the back.
I agree. Council, do you agree with me?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is what defines good neighbors in my mind, and so I'm willing to go forward and move forward.
Your, your, your thing is on.
Yeah. Push, push the button.
Oh, here, Michael.
Now, your light's on.
Oh, Scotty, red, okay. She needs stop. But just make sure we have some of this in minutes from, from a legal standpoint, we don't have an ordinance prohibiting mobile food trucks. So, we appreciate this. This is all, and the key thing is differentiating, you know, similarly situated people, you can't treat them differently unless you have a compelling reason to do so.
Right.
So, just before it, everybody rushes out and brings mobile food trucks in, I think everybody's pretty much on notice that we have, we've had public hearings, we've talked about mobile food ordinances, you're also willing to comply. So, I, I, I see this, I don't see any similarly situated people right now. And even if somebody were to open up next week, they're going to know they're in the city limits. Okay, so there's a big deal where, and the law does look at the fact is like, okay, you got three mobile food trucks, why are you treating them differently? Well, one, this was going on before, we've been gave out notices, had public hearings, talked over two different drafts, mobile food ordinance, truck ordinances. So, it was before all that. It was before we had any public hearings. So, they're, they're not, and then these, and they didn't know they were in the city limits. So, again, while ignorance of law is not an excuse per se, those, in my opinion, the judge will look at it and treat them differently, even though they're similarly situated. It's a different situation, and so a court would actually say they're not similarly situated like the other two, the two mobile trucks went out, ran out next week and started operating. I, I, I think a judge would hold that they're not similarly situated. That's very important, I think, for this analysis.
No, absolutely.
So? Y'all are relying on me, and that's my job. I mean, a lot of the attorneys simply won't give their opinion, but I want y'all to feel comfortable. I think we're okay here, because I think a judge, again, even if somebody hears this, oh, God, they're, they're letting them do this, I'm going to go start next week. So, if you've got two mobile trucks, you know, as soon as we pass the ordinance regulating, then going, oh, no, no, wait, no, it's grandfathered, I did it before too. I think a judge would hold this particular situation is they're not similarly situated as the two people that set up shop next week. I'm speaking hypothetically.
To be clear, this, this honey's is okay. Where it is working.
I think a judge would find that it doesn't violate equal protection.
And that's the one, that is the only one.
Correct.
Okay, can I ask additional? We've been having food trucks come out, Rosa's Taco Truck, a Catfish Truck, they pay a minimal amount of rent to us because we got room in county. So, going forward for this season, are we allowed to continue having them come? Should I call that quits until the ordinances are in place for other food trucks?
In my opinion, I think it would help the city's legal stance if you did not allow those people. I mean, I'm not trying to hamstring you. But I think y'all doing the wrong is one thing, that it is another. I just, I don't think y'all are, and the main thing from legal standpoint is I want to show y'all are not similarly situated to anyone else, to the people you mentioned, to anybody who's set up next week. You're not similarly situated, so it's okay to treat you differently. Because if everybody is similarly situated, means all the same food trucks, we can't treat you differently. My position is, and I want the council, is I do think you're in a different position than anybody that did with setup shop next week.
Well, let's, let me ask you this. If, seeing the situation that it is, they were still operating or allowing the other, allowing the other food trucks to come in based off of what they knew was okay until we found out later the mistake? So, and again, I'm asking hypothetically, would this still be the same as if they are still charging them for other food trucks? I mean, I do see, you know, people going there, I do see a benefit of it, but if it still falls on that same platform of the assumption was okay at the time, because they thought they were operating in correct, would they be okay to still have another food truck? Because it's, I understand it's a other food truck entity, but they were still doing it based off of what they thought was right.
And I understand what you're saying, and that's a fair question. My concern, if there's five other people set up shop next, set up shop next week on the basis of what we're doing here, and you let those, you let those other trucks come in and do what they're doing, those other five people are going to go, hey, wait a minute. Why can't I? Yeah.
Okay, so exactly on that same, if they already had, I don't remember the other two that you just had, the Taco Truck and the Catfish. So, would it be fair if we were putting stuff in the minutes that we say, okay, since those were the ones that they were already using and having, I don't know, let's just say the last sixty days?
Would those?
Would those be okay, but we can't add more? Like, we would have to tell them, hey, those two are fine, but if Joe's truck wants to come, Joe's trucks are no, because this is what we had going into it.
Here's where the concern comes from. Number one, we don't have an ordinance right now existing that prohibits. So, technically, they can all, all do this. Really, they don't have to ask for our permission, okay? The, the concern here is, is that they unintentionally were operating inside our city limits, I found out. That's one way we can differentiate them from anybody else to start next week. You're going to know that you're in, in the city limits. My concern is the greater number of people that get involved, the more difficult it becomes to single out this group, this group, this group from that. One single, and I hear what you're saying, and I'm not going to totally disagree with you. I'm simply saying it's a, from my, I believe, my opinion, it's a legally more defensible position. Maybe we should have this in executive session instead of here, I don't know, to be okay with, with what they're doing in and of themselves versus allowing other people. I think it also shows a recognition on their part, and I appreciate what you said, of like, ooh, hey, you know what? What we're doing is not really in concert with some of what y'all have been talking about, your mobile food truck ordinance. So, we want to comply with what, kind of what we've heard to the extent that we can, just in general, in general terms. Does that, does that answer your question at all? Again, I'm not going to necessarily say that you're wrong. Does that answer your question or no? I want to, I want to answer your question.
Yeah, I definitely understand exactly what you're saying, and a hundred percent totally agree, because if it did go that route that, you know, no one would want it to go, but if it did, I don't understand making sure we're protected, but also even they're protected.
Right, right. Right, because now it's a, it's a business, the other, the rotating food trucks provide profit to honeys. So, if it's not, if it would be in the city, those food trucks would need to apply for operating permits as well. Well, here's, here's. What about this? Let me ask you this. Is it possible for them to still be, you know, with you? But, because I, the way I understand it is you're very close to the city-county line. You're just on the quote unquote, wrong side, yeah. Can they stop short of that line now that we know there is and still be kind of with you with that? Okay. Councilmember Neal, would that be, I'm looking for a compromise here.
How long till we get our ordinance done?
Here's, here's, here's what I want to.
I think you've got your attorney telling you if you want to allow those other trucks, that it would be better for them to be set back to twenty-five feet outside of the city limits. On the other hand, I don't think he's trying to dictate the policy to you.
No.
Whether you want to grant the, answer the question that Ms. Pullen has proposed, so.
Here's, here's what, here's my thought on this, and I'm not sure, obviously, that's, that's a fabulous idea, but there's also another thought I have on here, but I need to ask you a question. What is your, what do you consider your normal season as far as when, when you kind of see the end of doing stuff there? Of August, right? Okay. And, and there was a reason in my madness of why I was asking that.
But the other food trucks?
Hold on, hold on. Because of my thoughts were, how long is it going to take us to get our ordinance in place to where we could allow them to operate?
You know, in open, but.
Correct.
On, on one hand, okay, you, you, you run a risk if you pass the ordinance, conceivably, Rick's got some stuff, Councilman Wester sent me some stuff, so it'll, I mean, we can hurry along, we could do it, I think, thirteen, twelve, around there is when that's needed. Okay, so we could do it then. So, that's about a month before they're closed. So, now, now the concern is you're treating everybody the same because nobody is set up. Now, it's a little different. Nobody else is set up but Ms. Pullen.
Right.
And, which is fine, and I am not jumping on you at all. I'm trying to, but my job is to protect them. So, if you do that, then you're there and you enforce it against everybody else except for Ms. Pullen. So, maybe you're better off, you know, we can have another public hearing to make sure it's still in everybody's eye, and then maybe pass it around. Our meeting would be right around when she closes, probably, you said that Monday, is it twelve, thirteen, fourteen?
We could pass it then. Then here's what I'm going to say. I think the idea, the best idea is what you suggested, give those additional ones back a little bit more. I know that's, that's a little uncomfortable until such time as we can all hash out what needs to be in that ordinance, so that, that document is in place. And then for the next season, we should be good, depending on how that document comes out. I think we'd be good all the way around.
Okay. Am I limited just to the two trucks I mentioned earlier? I do have other trucks booked for this season. I have Cousins' name lobster, again, I have a local one, Little Red's coming in a couple weeks. They're already booked, and right now, I'm blank for who else. The two I mentioned before have been coming on a regular basis. Am I, if y'all vote that yes, am I okay to allow the other everybody to do that as well?
I think as far, as far as they're, if they're set back like that, I don't.
If they're on county line, we have no say. If they're in the county.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we have any control if they're set back. And, and our thing is, is we're not trying to control anything. I want you guys to do good things. It's just we have to be fair in the ordinance, because I'm, I'm with the city attorney. I think I don't want fifty guys popping food trucks all up and down the, the road. I want them, you know, my thing is I want it done, I want it done right. And because it not only benefits you, but it benefits the city, and it benefits the public that want to partake in those things. So, if, if you can do that with them for now, until we can, such time as we can finish up and get this ordinance, you know, hashed out properly, you know, worded and put in place, and then I think for your next season, we, we probably will be able to do things a little bit different.
Well, plus you do have trucks operating there outside, after August, right? Don't you have other trucks?
We have in the past had them. I don't have anyone scheduled as of now. I mean, if it's your request, if I need to stop that, and it's, it's just, I've, I've found it odd enough that a lot of people that own food trucks do not have a permanent place to park. They're, they're scrounging places to go. That's the sad point, but I don't have them scheduled beyond August, but if I need to stop that.
I would just ask you guys, as you're talking about the number that you're going to put into the county, then we don't have a regulatory ability to do that, but keep these guys in mind when you decide the number that you're going to put there. Help them defend the position of leaving yours open during this period of time, by not just filling that whole territory full of food trucks, even though it's outside the county. So, just kind of keep these guys in mind when you look at the scope.
My, no, sorry. I would love to visit with you, because you have had multiple people there as to what seemed to be the best hours of operation and all that, because that, we're, with us in that ordinance, we're trying to find the right wording, the right timeframes that work to where it's not dangerous for the public, but it, you know, people aren't open and not making any money, you know, because people aren't showing up. Just kind of get an idea from you, what you see as good times, bad times, where there's the dry spells, and so forth and so on. Love to visit with you on that way. Yes, ma'am. So, we're, if I'm understanding right, we're good with her location, it's any of her additional ones set back a little bit further. Thank you so much, and thank you both for being here. Yes, sir. Jackie, you don't owe us an apology. Right. Yes, sir. We thank you so much for everything you have done for us, and what, what you guys do is, you know, moving forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pullen.
Thank you so much, guys. All right. Seven point seven, emergency warning system information by Chief Simmons. Come on, Chiefy.
All right, good evening, mayor and councilmember. We're bringing the information back for the tornado, emergency sirens that we've been discussing since, my last day was March of twenty twenty. Finally got ahold of the, of a contract that we've been dealing with, with American Signal. Told them to give me some numbers, so I can at least present some numbers to council, so you'd have an understanding of what the cost is now, after speaking with them, and they're able to look at our quote, roughly, they told us it'd be additional fifteen to twenty thousand with the same existing quote that you have there, increase in cost. Poles, fuel, construction costs would be, that's the reason why they have that significant increase in, in that two siren towers that we were looking at, putting in back in twenty twenty. You see the map there? That would be the same existing map that we had in play that covers just a small portion. You see the map there? That would be the same existing, uh, map that we had in play that covers just a small portion of the city limits. Covers a big, large area of the county, um, out there with the siren being placed back there by, on the backside of Sonoma Verde. None of that's changed as of right now. I know there was discussion at the last meeting of some, there's a lot of things, my understanding, Rick, that would have to be put into play if council decided to move forward with this before we could actually, you know, have this setup put into play. Also, we discussed about having other options, so I gave you, provided you a sheet there that has the top twenty twenty-two weather apps. I use three different weather apps that are off that app for years. They've never failed me. They're pretty accurate. I pinpoint, I've got the City Pen, I've got my Home Pen, um, and, and my phone never dies. TVs go out, especially if you've got satellite or anything like that, so I wanted to provide you some of those options too, because I know that was discussion. Um, I did realize that we, on our city website, we do have the ability for any citizen to click the button that says, "Join Nixle." Anybody inside the city can join Nixle by going to our city website. It's on the front page. Well, and that's, that, that's the other thing too, is a lot of them, you know, they, they realize they were designed for that reason. Any company you go to, whether it's American Signal or anybody else, all of them will tell you, these are not designed for you to be indoors. If we had a large outdoor venue, say the harbor, say an example would be the harbor in Rockwall. That's a big, large outdoor venue, and that's what those sirens are designed for. Not for Johnny Joe citizens that's in their home eating dinner, watching a football game to be able to hear it. So, you know, as the city goes along, it may be something the city could look at in the future if they feel free to, you know, if we start having large food truck lots or whatever may be the topic, you know, we have a football field, soccer fields, baseball fields, a big pu, you know, public area. That's what they're designed for, but not for the citizens that live with inside, that are inside their residence at night.
Chief, explain to us the logistics of how, how do we go about pulling that alarm? How do you get your information and what, how does that all work?
So we'd have to receive the information in regards to a, a possible tornado, or tornado, uh, within our city limits or in our area. So then that individual, somebody, myself, or whoever we would designate, and Rick will be able to speak a lot more on this, through all you would have designated that would be available to be able to push that button once we get the notification, so.
And what's your source of information again?
Ma'am?
What is your source of information that you get the notice to push the button?
This is from, oh, the National Weather Service.
Okay.
Which is?
The same source of the-
Well, the apps.
Chief, and people have advanced and become more modern. We are more inclined to electronics and being indoors, whereas this thing goes off a ton of times between Nixle, Rockwall County Emergency Management, National Weather Service, all those. People are more inclined to have this go off and know that, and have that technology for early warning than they are listening to a siren out there. It's kind of like, an example would be walking through the parking lot at the shopping mall to go shopping. How many times you walk through that parking lot and you hear this, eh, 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 and you go, there's somebody's car alarm again? What was the original intent for a car alarm? It warns people and let them know, hey, somebody's breaking into a car. You walk past them all day long and don't think two cents about it, you just go, oh, there's somebody's car alarm going off again, or somebody's home alarm. You don't think, let me call the police and do all that, but if your phone goes off and says, hey, there's a tornado fixing to bounce on your head in about five minutes, you're gonna go, oh crap, and run. The other side of that is the early warning devices, like he was getting to. The National Weather Service is the one that initiates that initial call. Chief Simmons and I had to go down here to the unincorporated ETA J part of our city, right down there at five forty-eight and two oh five. The people from the National Weather Service met us down there when we were surveying. They said, "We never got a warning from our technology that said that funnel cloud was forming and that was gonna hit." There was no time for them to tell anybody because their fancy electronic sensing stuff, whatever you wanna call it, that does the weather, never saw it coming. So you, you spend the money for an outdoor warning system, there's chances it may not be activated because the weather service may not get the information to activate.
Well, and again, it also takes, if you have the main base, which would be located at the fire station across the street.
Right.
Bad weather usually means our guys are out. There's things going on, getting calls, trees, you name it. So if somebody's not there, then you have to have a backup for a backup for a backup. If I'm out of town, then I've gotta have somebody that backs up, say, in this case, it was, uh, Mr. Crowley. He's the backup. Well, he's out of, I mean, it, I'm not against him at all, by any means.
Right.
But I believe that with technology, there's, there's so many more ways to keep up what's going on. Everybody goes to bed with their phone somewhere within a few feet of their body. Somewhere within a few feet of their body.
I think what brought this on, like, back then, because it wasn't night, everybody was sleeping. I was there, well, and the lady from the National Weather Service did say, we didn't even have a-
She apologized. First thing she said is, "We're sorry."
So it's like, it's like, even if you spend the money to have the siren, it's not a-
Not a guarantee.
It's not a guarantee.
By any means.
I mean, Mayor's right. My phone goes off if it's something crazy, and this, you choose to silence it. You choose to silence it. I mean, it's that, I mean, I don't know, I will pad it up myself if it's being turned off, you know, so that's the way I look at it.
Rick has a lot of years of experience with Rockwalls, and I know he could probably speak to it.
Let me just talk about that a little bit, you know, it's assuming you do get, you always get the information that the National Weather Service has. If we have these sirens, we're gonna have to sit down with this council and talk in great, we, I'm not gonna be, we're gonna have to sit down with this council and talk in great detail. Do we set the siren off if they, they're predicting seventy mile an hour wind, but not if they're predicting sixty-five? Do we set the sirens off if there's a tornado warning heading toward us, or if there's a tornado warning for Rockwall County? Rockwall County's not huge, but, you know, it's usually pretty clear that tornado, if it's on the other side of, in Dallas County, it's probably, and it's up to the north of the county, it's probably not threatening us in McLennan-Chisholm. But we've gotta have, we've gotta talk about all of those situations. This council's gonna have to adopt a policy, and let me tell you, you're not ever gonna get it a hundred percent right.
No.
Because there, you talk about what do you call, Saturday morning quarterbacks? Everybody knows after the storm whether that alarm should have been set off or not. It takes a while to get through that phase where people quit saying, well, I didn't hear it, versus what they'll say, well, where are you, where are you while I was home asleep? No, it's not ever gonna wake you out of a slumber. Uh, or they say, well, we had, uh, seventy mile an, we had fifty mile an hour wind, and the National Weather Service said we might have, we might have this, we might have that, and you guys didn't set that siren off. You've gotta walk a line o- on that policy somewhere between, between where you wanna have it be of, of a protection to citizens who are outside, get inside and take cover, but you don't wanna set this thing off all the time, or nobody will ever pay attention to it. It's like a stop sign. If it's not warranted, nobody will ever stop at it. So, you know, there are good things about having that. We worked real hard on our policies in Rockwall, and I think we finally got them to sort of an equilibrium. But there exists a storm out there sometime that either, that, that's gonna cause people to come back in and say, your policy's slo- uh, flawed, because anybody knows when that happens, that alarm shouldn't, should've gone off. Or they're gonna say, this thing goes off all the time. There's always, you, that just comes with this deal, but you have to have a written policy, and you have to have the expect, expectation that that policy is gonna be, is gonna be followed. The other thing you have to kind of be careful of, in a city, in a county the size of Rockwall County, is there are probably people in McLennan-Chisholm that may be able to hear a city of Heath's siren. Okay? So you want to not be too far off-base with what, you know, you want to at least examine Heath's siren because, you know, well, he set theirs off, or Rockwall set theirs off, or I heard theirs, but I didn't hear theirs. So there's an awful lot of things to work through on that. It's manageable and you can do it. You can't do it without some criticism and questioning from people because people really get in, get involved in this because they perceive it to be something that impacts their safety. So you gotta kind of make sure there's some, uh, there's some logic, uh, with the other cities' policies too.
In speaking with what you just said about, you know, the criticism and the critiquing from the ci- uh, citizens, you know, I guess my question would be with the attorney. I mean, would they hold the city liable? Oh, you didn't set the siren off when you should have. I mean, or, you know, and if, I, I still fall back on, you know, that was a unfortunate situation on that particular storm, but I also remember watching the weather that day and that night before I went to bed, and I knew a storm was coming, I mean, not trying to sound like that person who doesn't care, but at some point, there's accountability within your home. And I mean, I, I, I make sure as the man at my house that my home is safe and secure when I go to bed, and that's also checking, you know, weather and everything else, what's going on. Um, but if we did have a siren, uh, for Michael, if we didn't set a siren off in time, I mean, would they try to hold the city liable? They say, oh, you didn't set the alarm off when you should have. If I would've known this alarm was going off, I would've done this way. Well, you set the alarm off when you shouldn't have, so you just cost me this doing this way.
What's your argument? We can, there's, oh.
Um, good question, and to be quite honest with you, now it's funny a bit more, but sure, somebody's always gonna sue somebody. That's the world we live in. The question really isn't, is someone gonna sue, is when someone more than likely does, because that's, we live in a contentious, contentious society, what is the likelihood of it? In my opinion, that's gonna be governed by sovereign, the, the tort claims act under one oh one, the solfractance laws code. I think it's gonna, gonna cover us in terms of any liability for anything.
We'd probably, as long as we had a written policy and we followed our written policy.
Okay. Um, the other thing too that I feel like, how much were each of these, um, sirens?
Our, our original quotes-
What, what is it now?
It would be around ninety-seven thousand, roughly.
For how many?
From seventy-one thousand, roughly ninety thousand.
Each?
Total, for two.
For two?
For the same package we had quoted in twenty twenty.
Okay, and where would you put these?
One of them, if you look at the map, one of them is here at the base, station, um, station one. The second one was placed on the, I call it the north, but northeast side of Sonoma Verde, um, to kind of cover that little bit of, of the city limits. Of course, if you look at that map, we're covering a big chunk here in-
Right here.
Rockwall County. Even if we move it to the radio tower, on the, the county's radio tower, we would cover a large chunk of unincorporated area versus city limits.
Well, in my opinion, the area that is out by Austin Corners and those places out there may not hear them.
Oh, you, you can look at the map. It's, we get down to the point where it's, it's very, very low audible.
Okay, so with that being said, because we are one acre or more lot size, our area is so much larger. We would need more than two to, like, in, in, to be honest with you.
Absolutely, but this was kind of the beginning stages when initially talked about as saying, what if we just look at putting two into place? We would need many more to, to be able to cover the city truly to meet the requirements inside that yellow, what you see on the map, your yellow, your orange and red areas.
But how would, I mean, I'm just trying to put myself in the people's shoes that are barely gonna hear it. They're still paying tax money or whatever for these, but they're barely able to hear it. Like, I'm not sure that that would go over well, and that's just my opinion. I think if you're gonna do it, do it right, where everybody that pays gets to hear properly, or just don't do it at all. And, and I mean, especially if we've got other means. I mean, it's kind of like throwing, you know-
You know, back to, you know, being over public safety, being the fire chief, being, having responsibility to make sure that we protect our citizens. I personally think that going the route of these apps and things like that, and maybe having the weather summit service come out and do those weatherware courses or whatever they do, offering some of those out in the city maybe to get citizens involved. To me, that would, I think we'd get more out of it than just doing the initial two alarms.
Speaking of apps, is there something that we can do in the city, like, push out an app? Hey, if you sign up for this app, you will get the alarm. So that way you're not-
They've got those available on that, Nixle.
I know, I know Rockwall has that. I, I get that. I'm talking about McLennan-Chisholm.
We could. That's why we gave you a, a list of-
All those, all those apps. And found what they consider the top ten twenty twenty-two weather apps for Android or iOS.
Here's what I'm gonna say. The chief was right. Right now, the best way, I, I agree with you. With the technology that's out there, the quickest means is probably get the city information. Are we gonna get everybody? Absolutely not. If the sirens aren't gonna get everybody as well, and to Trudy's point, I agree with her. If you were to go the outdoor siren now, it's all or nothing, but here's, well, here's the other part of that. You could put, and, and I'm gonna use hypothetical, you could put six sirens out there, and somebody out there is gonna complain that they can't hear themselves. You're gonna always have those vulnerable people. It doesn't matter if, if it was literally by its specs, well within range of that house. Somebody's gonna complain it's not loud enough for them. You're never gonna please all of the public all of the time. But I agree with you too. I, yes, two sirens would be a start, but this is a city that has to watch their money right now, um, for obvious reasons, and I don't think two is enough. Four would, I think, would be a very bare minimum if we were gonna go that route to try and cover the majority of the city, um, and parts of areas that may be unincorporated, but at this time, I think perhaps we're the most inexpensive, but best way to push information out of this town.
And I, I could just add something. You know, if, if, if you don't wanna, if you're not in the position where you think you wanna do the sirens or whatever, you can still do some things to help people be safe. Uh, uh, you can, you know, uh, using every means that we have, and we're somewhat limited, but, you know, our website and Facebook, you can constantly, constantly drive in that this is the way you be weather safe in, in McLennan-Chisholm, and just constantly try to get that message out with every opportunity. Uh, uh, and, and that, to, to me, by not putting in sirens, if you don't put in sirens, you, you still can do some other things to try to help keep people as safe as they can be.
And it doesn't mean, like, like Rick's saying, it doesn't mean that that option is not dead and it's not ever gonna come back yet.
It's just like, not-
Right now, that is not the best option for all of our citizens, citizens to do it.
Kind of comes down to me to, to, you know, particularly with the policy that we're gonna look at in a few minutes, which will tell us if it's adopted, that a project like this, the best time to consider it, uh, would be when you're looking at a budget, so it's timely to be talking about it. Uh, and I think our, our question tonight is, uh, with the budget proposals that come back do, this year, uh, do you wanna see that as a proposal or do you not? That doesn't mean you're gonna fund it or not fund it, but do you wanna see that as a, a, a proposal when you're considering the budget?
Um, I will say that as of Thursday, I'm gonna be redoing some of our website, um, with Mark, and if you will give me some of those apps, or if we can narrow down with some of the best ones, I took pictures of your phone already, but-
Think we can put the ten that I sent you on there, just, just, we're not settled on one or two. We're saying, hey, we went and researched, here's what they classify as the best twenty twenty-two apps.
And we can, if, if, if council would like, I could put those apps on there, or we can figure out a way to get-
If it's the top ten list, I don't have-
We could put a weatherware tab on there.
Yeah, be aware.
Kind of follow up with Rick.
Yeah.
And any other information we get from the Weather Service, where they send out these weatherware alerts, we could put things, there, there's many things that we can do to work on, on pushing information out there heavy.
That sounds good, 'cause I mean, that'll be on my list of things to do, or, you know?
I'll work with you on that.
Okay, sounds good.
Chief, just to give you a sense of proportion, I've been looking a little bit at horny, and they've been talking about this issue, I think since last year, and they brought in a company and they, they put it off a contract, and they're putting in twelve. Actually, they have three currently, and they're gonna replace those three, and all the others can be twelve. And, uh, the cost there is going to be around three hundred eighty thousand dollars for the twelve, the twelve. So that breaks it down to- So that breaks it down to about thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars, if you're, whereabouts if my math runs it right.
Yeah, we, we have the.
No, I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not adding anything.
And if you look at the sheet, you'll probably see a pretty good comparison to what, what Councilmember Tucker's saying. Our big cost upfront, your main, the one tower is the most expensive. It has all the components, it has all the equipment, the station equipment. So you'll look on there, you'll see that one. I take that back. That was a question I had with them. They didn't break it out. But our biggest cost was that one, the prior number one siren here at the station. The additional sirens were pretty compatible, comparable with Councilmember Tucker saying, about thirty-some thousand dollars apiece.
And so, um, i- if you look at their mapping and compare it to ours, i- i- as I said to, to the mayor, it's apples and oranges, as far as I'm concerned, because they, all theirs are located in very high dense, uh, locations. And I think they're much more dense than we are overall. And, you know, I've been mulling this around, as you all know, because we've had this discussion a half dozen times, if not more, uh, whether to go to an app or, or, or try to institute some hard physical item. Uh, and I'm going to quandary about it to tell you the truth, but as far as the public goes, on the one side, they absolutely want, they're looking for something tangible and physical like a siren. But on the other hand, we just had a rollback. So there's that dichotomy that I'm being faced with. What do they really want? They, they want something in terms of a siren perhaps, but they don't want to pay for it perhaps.
Talking over the years, a lot of citizens were kind of, they understand the sirens, but they realize that if they're in bed or they're asleep, it's not going to benefit them unless they happen to be living in that red category on that map. The rest of anybody outside that red dot, they're not going to hear it.
And, and we're a much more rural kind of community where the advantage that you're going to see at Fornie, certainly, I don't think you're going to get it here, so.
I, I'm just, uh, the fact that you have to rely on human intervention to do it, or human action to do it, and we don't have a lot of humans to do that kind of action either.
Well, even, even if the technology was there that you didn't have to rely on them, the technology didn't work during the last one, because it didn't, their technology didn't even notify them to let anybody know.
They have.
So there's still always that what if.
They, they've improved the technology, so.
Yeah.
Again, if we had the system, then I would have an ability to rephone, through my mobile radio, but then I've got to have, you know, there, there's all those options to be able to set that off from a remote location. Everybody that's on that list would have, to have that same ability to make sure that we don't misstop, you know.
And you, and then you've got to preserve one final, once your policies are done, you've got to preserve. We felt like we did in Rockwall, have to preserve one other option to, to all of that. If we have a police officer or supervisor in the field in the middle of the night and they see something, whether or not the weather service has seen it or not, they happen to see something, they think it needs to go off, you need to let them set it off. You know, so, you know, i- i- if the sheriff was willing to do that, then if his folks were out and saw that tornado, it hadn't been forecasted and it's coming right in, and they need to be able to set that off or, or direct it to be set off too.
Yeah, previous agency, it was a bit upon our shoulders, and like this, we can certify storm.
Your, your main patrol system was in dispatch, which is, which is occupied twenty-four seven.
Dispatch, yes, yes it did. And, 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 uh, you know, the dispatch personnel could, could monitor what the weather service was saying. Monitor that, and when it, when it met the criteria, they, uh, they would set it off. Or the fire chief could call and have it set off, the police chief could call and have it set off. Or a police officer or a police supervisor who was on duty and saw something that indicated the need, they could have it set off as well. And even with all of that, sometimes we would set ours off, and maybe Rallett wouldn't, or Rallett would set theirs off. And we wouldn't, just because of a little bit different, a little bit different policies, which we kind of tried to reconcile, but never did quite.
So guys, it's a lot to think about. It's more something worth voting on and. Think about it, think about the odds. I mean, I think it's worthy to put the apps on.
I'll work with. You know, I was just thinking, as we sat here, is that we have the opportunity, coming up on the fourth, I think Sonoma Verde is going to have a fair down there with fireworks and such. And when you have a large gathering, we had, we had the, uh, the Easter egg drop. Not too long ago, we had a lot of folks that maybe we could put up a, like a tent or some kind of a pavilion, where we have a, a safety kind of, um, advocacy being done by, you know, the chief and his folks. And as part of that, we could, we could start pushing, you know, this alert system. Because it sounds like we're not going to invest in a hard system, but rather, and I actually think it's more efficient to, to come across with a, with like a Nixle or one of these software packages, because as everybody has said, you got your phone right with you evening you go to bed, and that thing's going to go off. And when we're having storms, I'm very sensitive to, you know, that thing going off and saying, there's a, there's a tornado down the street from me. So, you know, something like a, like a pavilion or some kind of a tenting, where we could, we could start to actually push this, push this thing.
We plan on having a pop-up tent with the department stuff on it, so we can start having, you know, when we do these events, we'll have a little booth. You can buy weatherwear pamphlets, just like we buy, you know, buy stop, drop and roll, get low and go, eat it and all that. We can buy the same stuff and be able to have those little pamphlets to hand out when we have these.
Good deal.
So what I'm gathering is we will leave for a future discussion whether or not you want us to bring this item back as a budget proposal or a budget consideration.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to move something up, because I know you guys will probably talk about the policy for a little bit, for, for a minute. So I'm going to move seven point nine ahead of seven point eight. Consider appointments for planning and zoning commission. Um, we have a gentleman that is here that is our, is an applicant for a position with planning and zoning. Um, there is, there is a position that is, an individual is not seeking reelection or, or reappointment. Um, we have a gentleman here that would like to fulfill a full-time planning and zoning position, and then we have another that has, that has been an alternate that's also looking at that. Yes. So I am, I am fine with, with her remaining. She's done a, a, as good a job as she could. Um, and I think that the, the person that put the application in, who's here in the audience, with the appointment, um, is somebody that, uh, holds the values and the ideas of the city and the finances and dear to our, and is a good, a good member of our planning and zoning. I'd throw these considerations back. I, you know, I, I gave you my recommendation.
I make a motion to approve the applicant, Lloyd McLendon, beyond the planning and zoning commission. He, he comes to the meetings, he's here, uh, tonight, um, he's part of the community. Second what the mayor said, he, he would want what's best for the community, um, in a whole, and, you know, that's, that's why I'm making the motion to accept, uh, a reappointment to the planning and zoning commission.
And we, we don't have a, um, I see on here that it says Martin, although, um, he is always, although he wasn't at some of the meetings, he was, oh, he has always called in, um, if he is needed, if he was needed. I think that speaks volumes. Um, and I personally think that we should move Martin into, uh, Sherri Ludwin's spot. So.
Okay, but first off, we should discuss them all now, and then we can decide.
Oh, oh, sorry. As a, like, as a alternate, or as a?
As a full-time member.
As a full-time member?
And who are you taking out?
Who's, who's leaving?
So you're saying leaving Martin as an alternate and Swindal in her place and?
Martin would stay an alternate. If London's leaving, Lloyd McLendon would take the spot of London.
I, I'm going to, I have my reasons. And I wished I didn't have to say them.
Yeah.
Well, here, here's a question, if we're open for discussion. Um, I see Martin's an alternate, I see he calls in. Does he come to the city council business? And I don't know that.
He doesn't have to contribute.
I understand that. I'm just saying, if, if, if the person here is caring about the community and where it's being voted to, he comes.
I don't think anybody's questioning.
I don't think anybody's questioning him either, because I am not. I'm just, I'm asking.
I mean, I mean, anybody's, uh, dedication to the city. I don't think that's what, uh, we're saying. I'm just saying, because Mr. Martin has had experience on P and Z, he's requested to move up, I just feel that's a, a, a good thing to do.
Did he put an application in to move up?
Yes.
Well, the, the discussion of whether or not we accept permission from the department, uh, London, for that constitution, obviously, Leslie, the state legislature. There's no further discussion. And, and above, Martin's better, huh?
All right.
I'd make a motion to put into the position of the P and Z, upcoming member would be Mr. Martin. He would be placed, if you're asking me, uh, he would be placed as an alternate.
I'll second the motion.
As chair.
Swindal. It's not Wesley, it's Swindal.
Schwallway.
No, it's not.
It says on here, Leslie Schwall.
It's Leslie Schw- Schwallway is, is, is the head.
I don't know what chair was.
No, it's not the chair. It's, it's, it's Swindal.
It has on here, current member, Leslie Schwall.
Leslie has always been the chair.
Is chairperson.
For several years.
She's not up, her position is not up.
No, but, but it says the chairperson is Leslie.
Yes.
Danielle is seeking reappointment.
And for her, yes.
So Danielle can stay where she's at. Sherri London is no longer there, so we move Brad Martin into her spot. And we put McLendon into Brad's spot.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right. Swindal is seeking reappointment.
Well, Swindal, it'd be, you're.
Yeah.
That is Danielle, I haven't stuck. I was thinking, I kept thinking about it. Okay, so she's seeking reappointment.
Mm-hmm.
And Martin is seeking to move up.
Yes.
Let's see. Let's. All right. So, and your motion was?
It's for Swindal to, uh, be reappointed, for Martin to be moved up into the position vacated by Sherri London. And for Mr. McLendon to be, uh, positioned as an alternate.
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion?
I know that, uh, prior to coming on console, I sat in the audience for several years, and there was so much that I actually ended up learning, uh, that I felt very comfortable coming up on, into console at the point that, you know, I hit the ground running. Um, and so there's an advantage to having to wait a little bit perhaps. I think that Mr. Martin himself is, is been conscientious about, if not attendance, about making sure that there was a quorum, which with the P and Z, I know we had difficulties with that. Uh, so there's an adherence to, uh, some loyalty to the city. I think Mr. McLendon will certainly have a great opportunity, ample opportunity to serve, whether it's on P and Z, console, whatever it be. Um, and so, um, I think it's appropriate for Mr. Martin to be positioned to be appointed to, uh, P and Z at this point in time.
I disagree. Motion dropped there. There's no further discussion. I oppose, huh?
Aye.
I'll oppose, aye?
Aye.
All right. Move on seven points, or seven point seven?
Seven point eight.
Seven point eight, the one on policy pick.
Councilman Tucker requested that this policy be drafted. It really was a, a rather quick draft, because it was kind of a takeoff on the policy that was adopted, policy number two. It basically covers a few items other than, uh, those vehicles and equipment that were covered in policy two, and how the city would, uh, uh, some of the terms and standards by which the city would acquire or plan to acquire those larger capital, uh, projects or items. I guess when you look at pros- at, at things like projects, it also includes professional design and, and, uh, in some cases, things like, um, uh, uh, soil testing, things of that nature. So this policy outlines, uh, what the council would have presented to you when one of those projects or items is, is proposed. Uh, it says the best time to do that is during, when a budget is being considered. It also outlines the type of professional services based on whatever type of professional services would be required to design or, or move forward with the acquisition of either a, a project or an item. It defines how that, those recommendations also come to the council when you make the determination on that. Same policies, uh, same policy with regard to when it, when it comes to you, the, you know, the, the price estimate, uh, from whoever's proposing it, uh, and then a recommendation from the city administrator and finance director about how you fund, what options for funding those are available to the council. Um, it, of, of course, also requires that these acquisitions be done in accordance with the purchasing laws. And so, uh, I will tell you that I was trying to get this policy, uh, done before I left, so Mr. Halla and, and Mr. Smith haven't had a chance to look at it. As with the other policy, I would expect there would be some minor changes with that, but if, if you're agreeable with this, uh, with this type, with this policy, then I'll get it to them. If there are any material changes, it will come back to you. Uh, if they're not, then we'll go ahead and get it executed and move forward, should you decide to prove it. Uh, Mr. Tucker was, uh, one who asked that policy be brought forward for your consideration. So you may want to hear from him this evening, uh, as well on what his thoughts are about it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
On this, and I think you covered it really well, Rick. Uh, basically, I think it's time to start formalizing some of our policies that have been somewhat loose, and as the mayor has continually said, you know, we have to think of ourselves as a real city, uh, even though we're pretty widespread and rural. And so this is part of that process. And so, uh, this falls on the heels of the previous policy, which really.
And so, uh, this falls on the heels of the previous policy, which really pointed at vehicle purchasing at levels over twenty-five thousand dollars. And I just wanted to expand on that topic. Um, there's been a couple, uh, situations where we, we really kind of needed this kind of review from experts, CPA and the city administrator. In my mind, particularly, it was a sewer project and the purchase of the fire truck, which, that was four hundred thousand dollars. A sewer project is five hundred. And I think we should have examined this up and opened it up to a little bit more discussion and looked at the possibility of financing some of those packages. So I think this is going to formalize that. It's going to force us to stop and make these considerations that I think are important. I think with large capital investments, such as a fire truck or a sewer system, you're looking at future, uh, citizens that'll be utilizing those, and I think they should be, have some skin in the game, so to speak, in terms of paying for those and not putting the onus of that payment all on the current taxpayer and on the current budget as well. Hence, hence the advocacy for a policy that, that puts us in a position to, to make this kind of consideration.
Well, I think if you have a policy in place, that's a good guide and formalizes the process.
Yep.
And I think it all will be a, basically a comprehensive purchase policy that the new city administrator will, will, uh, follow as, as his marching orders and to his staff's marching orders.
I think that comprehensive purchasing policy, as the city has grown, you're probably to a point where a more comprehensive purchasing policy that, uh, Councilman Kipit mentioned that would be a good project for the new, for the new manager, if he runs out with other things to do, which he won't.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, uh, policy number three, um, for funding the acquisition of a large capital investment project.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Open for discussion again?
I, I wasn't thinking that it's ready for a motion because we haven't had the attorney or the, uh, our finance officer look at.
If you prefer, what somebody can do, you can let the motion die, you've got a motion accepted, you can write it down, everybody voting either way. Then you could, you could make a motion, same thing, substitute review, the city attorney and the city.
Or if you're, if it's your preference beyond that, just direct that, um, this policy be, uh, presented to the finance director and the city attorney in return to you on their comments haven't been made. Or if you don't want to approve the policy, we won't submit it to them, but if you, uh, you, you could do it either of those ways, I think, in, in time.
I mean, I like the idea of the formalization, but I would like the good decision to take it.
Then it shouldn't have been on here for conservative approval.
Is it on for conservative approval?
If you read your agenda, that's what it says.
Yep, yep.
All right, there's no further discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Can we make a direction for the city administrator and the attorney and CPA to overlook this?
I think you can send it back over to them and ask them to look at it without having to make a motion or any kind of direction at this point. You can go to them and resubmit it on another agenda.
Would the council have any concern with us submitting it to the city attorney and the city finance director and then returning it after their comments have been made? Okay, we can do that.
All right, and that's all the agenda items. I don't have any updates, discussion or directions. All right, anybody have council member with thoughts if they need to do? I don't have anything.
Yesterday, North Texas Council of Government's transportation meeting, and it was, and they're going to be doing a study on the transit system or the required transit system for East Dallas County, Rockwall County, and Kaufman County, to determine what kind of, um, mass transport we might want or might need. And, uh, so they're going to do a study and it's going to be lasting for eighteen months. So I presume they'll be asking for our input in the next, uh, next few months. And we just were at the listening point yesterday. So there was that, and then, I don't know if everybody saw their RCH water bill, but they've asked everybody to water between the hours of five to eight AM to try and conserve water.
Anybody else got anything?
Again, there was a, a notice put out by the folks down at, uh, Sonoma Verde that there's a Fourth of July activity. I just want to reaffirm that.
If there's nothing else, we-
Mayor, I, if I could say just a couple of words, Stan, I suspect this will be my last council meeting. Uh, I want to thank this council, uh, for the opportunity to work for you and to work in the, uh, city of McClendon-Chisholm. I've, I've learned a lot here and I've, I had an opportunity to meet a lot of great folks. And I'll tell you, I mentioned, uh, bragged on Ray Smith earlier, and I'll do the same for, uh, Mr. Halla and, and Mr. Coker. They've been greatly, uh, greatly helpful to me throughout, and I appreciate their expertise and all that they provide to the city, as well as Shelley and Judy and, and the chief and all the firemen. I think you've got a great group and, and I, I appreciate all the help that all of them have afforded to me and, uh, look forward to your success with your new city administrator.
Absolutely. I, I must say this, um, first off, I think I speak on behalf of everybody. You were a godsend and if I needed somebody, and you've done a lot for us. What I would ask is that you would make yourself available for our second city council meeting in July. If you could be here, it would be appreciated. I don't know the date off the top of my head, I apologize. If you would, please make every effort to be here. Um, I would greatly appreciate that. And like I said, you were a godsend for us. We needed somebody with your strengths and your knowledge. And you've done absolutely phenomenal for the city. We would forever be grateful. Well, and the fun watching you two bicker at each other was, was great. All right, well, it is eight twenty-seven. We have covered everything on here. Meeting adjourned.